Becky.
Happy spring, everybody. I'd like to call the March 15th City Council meeting for the city of Cannon Falls to order. Could we have roll call, please?
Ringel, is she up on Zoom? Doesn't look like it.
Who said she was gonna be?
Duncan.
Here.
Gesmi.
Here.
Cronenberger.
Here.
Lundell.
Here.
Montgomery.
Here.
Althoff.
Yo. Will you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Has the council got any additions or corrections to the agenda? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
All moved.
Motion by Duncan, a second by Gesmi, to approve the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried. Okay, public input. Public input is intended to afford the public an opportunity to address concerns to the city council. The public input will be no longer than 30 minutes in total length, and each speaker will have no more than three minutes to speak. Speakers may address topics relevant to the governance of the city. Speakers must sign up in advance and must provide their name, address, and topic they intend to address. Comments must be on topic, respectful, pertinent to city business, and adhere to the applicable data privacy rules. Any speaker that violates these rules will be asked to sit down, and if the speaker refuses to comply, they will be removed from the meeting. Speakers shall not address topics that are a subject of a public hearing. All such comments shall be made at the public hearing. The city council will not generally act on issues raised by the public input, but may choose to schedule consideration of the item on a future agenda. Okay, Becky, you're up.
Good evening. First, I'd like to thank you all for your service to the city. I know it's not an easy job. I am here asking why the city council seems to be giving away our tax dollars so easily. In a recent letter to the editor by Mike Daniels, the Cannonball Project was compared to a very similar project in Northfield. The Northfield Agreement gives developers $2.45 million of TIF financing over 26 years in exchange for 43 of the 106 apartments being offered as affordable housing and will be available only to those renters whose income is at or below 60% of Rice County's average median income, as reported by Northfield news outlets. The letter states. The letter continues, "The Cannon Falls Administrator in the city council approved a $3.6 million deal over 26 years for Keller Bartman Cannonball Apartments for only 76 apartments, not 106. A lot more money for a lot fewer apartments," the letter says, "and only 36 apartments are marked for affordable housing in Goodhue County." The letter continues, "That besides the TIF financing, the city gave the lot away at a loss, waived building permit fees, and waived SAC and WAC fees, plus more to the tune of $100,000. At the last city council meeting, you heard an offer at Sandstone Ridge to sell the development for a dollar. I understand that there's a lot of work to be done at Sandstone Ridge, but I'm frustrated that the council's considering selling this development for only a dollar. It appears to me that the council's more than willing to give our tax dollars away. I'm asking that the council do more research and quit giving away our tax dollars so that developers can reap the profits. Please don't jump at the first opportunity to give Sandstone Ridge away. It may turn into another unfinished project that you need to deal with down the road. Why are you so willing to throw away our tax dollars? Thank you."
Um, Mohammed? Is that not on it? Okay, anybody else? Public input?
He's out here.
He's in the hallway.
He didn't, no, he didn't need to sign up.
Okay.
Second, second call. Third and final call, public input. Hearing none, I'll close the public input portion of the meeting, and we'll get right into the consent agenda. Consent agenda items may be adopted under one motion as presented or may be removed for discussion and resolution as council business. For you at home and in the audience, I'll go through the consent agenda. Item A, just and correct claims for the accounting period ending March 10th, 2022. Item B, minute meetings for the March 1st, 2022 city council work session. Item C, minute meetings for the March 1st, 2022 city council meeting. Item D, Resolution 2620, reestablishing precincts and polling places. Item E, approve a MinDOT Highway 19 project field office rental. Item F, Resolution 2621, accepting a monetary donation from Hinkle Cannon Falls for $11,500 to the fire department. Item G, Resolution 2622, accepting a monetary donation from River Country Co-op for $2,500 to the fire department. Item H, approve replacement of the variable frequency drive at wealth number four. Item I, approve of Park Street Mill and Overlay. Item J, hire, approve the hire of a 2022 pool manager. And item K, reintroduction and final reading of Ordinance 379, ordinance of the city of Cannon Falls, Minnesota, amending the city code charter 152, rezoning property at 415 Hickory Drive from B2 to R4 PUD, and approving the final plans. Is there anything the council would like to pull down?
I'd like to pull down K.
Okay, we'll put that under council business as item B. Anything else? Okay, could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item K?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Lundell and a second by Duncan to approve the consent agenda minus item K. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried. Okay, council business. Resolution 2623, approving the plans and specs and ordering advertisement for bids. That would be on the tower, water tower. Bill, you got the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and council. So in your packet is a memo from Neil, and then also is a copy of the plans and specifications. So just to give you a quick summary, so what we're asking the council tonight is to approve the advertisement for bids, basically authorizing us to go out to bids. So this is a project that we will completely repaint the tower. So what I mean by that is the interior will be sandblasted down to bare metal, and it'll be repainted, as well as the exterior. And then we have some miscellaneous items that we'll be doing as well. Miscellaneous items being, we will put a new railing on the roof, or I'm sorry, a second railing on the roof to accommodate cellphone attendants. Neil, I think we have, what, three people on the tower now, so this would allow us to have more people on there. Also, some other miscellaneous repairs to, you know, gaskets and hinges, things like that on the tank as well. Also, we have some other, you know, spot repairs on some of the concrete, et cetera. I also like to, is there anything that, as we go into the bidding, that, you know, I call them challenges. Right now, our biggest challenge is the bidding environment. You know, the painting world has been a little more immune to this, immune to steel, gas prices, supply shortages, et cetera. But right now, we've seen a big increase. You guys have seen it, heard it, inflation. So until we open bids, I'm always, I'm always a little nervous about that. So that's the one challenge. The second challenge is the tank itself is going to be out of service. Our contract will call for it's out of service no more than 60 days. That means for 60 days, we will not have basically a way to, you know, store water provided to the city. So what that means is we have to have, this tower is served by what's called a booster pump. So it's a pump that basically fills the tank, then shuts off, tank drains down, fills it back up. Well, that pump will have to run 24 hours a day. So that means city staff, now they won't be monitoring it 24 hours a day, but they'll be monitoring it seven days a week. So it's a fairly labor-intensive item for city staff to monitor. And what'll happen is we will have more fluctuations in pressure, things like that, and as they adjust throughout the day. So that's just something that will be a little bit of a challenge. By and large, we're, you know, we expect the water-consuming public won't know the difference, but there's sometimes until you actually do it and get your controls and your pumps worked out, you know, it could be a little bit of a challenge. So I think my intent was to give you a short, a short preview or overview, and then if there's any questions, or if Dan or Neil wanted me to highlight anything else specifically. Well, one thing Neil did ask, or, you know, we have that railing is being paid for via a grant, but, so we do have that called out as a separate line item. So for example, if steel prices have really risen dramatically and it's cost more than the grant, well, then we'd have to come back and, you know, consider if we wanted to do that or not. So.
Very intense advertisement for bids. About 70 pages here. So I don't think we missed anything there.
Was the color in there?
No, yeah.
I didn't see that part.
But any questions for Bill?
I make a motion, we proceed.
Second.
Motion by Gesmi and a second by Montgomery, that we proceed with approving plans and specs and ordering advertiser bids for the painting and resurfacing of the water tower. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried. Okay. Item B, we'll go back to the item on the consent agenda. The reintroduction and first reading of Ordinance 379, ordinance of the city of Cannon Falls, amending the city code chapter 152, rezoning property at 415 Hickory Drive from B2 to R4 PUD, and approving final, final plans. That's the, that's the Cannonball site, Keller Bartman.
Yeah, I just, we're pulling that down. The reason it's on here tonight is to, to fix, fix a word in the, in the, or the ordinance, so everything's legal and correct. Neil, you want to add anything to that?
That is correct, Steve. The, under the now, therefore, we are removing the city council and replacing it with the city of Cannon Falls, hereby ordains. That's the only change in the ordinance. Otherwise, you have the, the exact copy, and there is a copy on your desk.
So I'll make a motion to go ahead and prove that with that, with that change.
Second to that?
Second.
Motion by Gesmi, a second Montgomery, to approve the reintroduction, first reading, ordinance 379 with that change. Is there any other discussion?
Well, before you do that, I'll just say, I am going to vote no, but I want to explain why. And it's just to give voice to those that are opposed to it. I mean, obviously, the majority is going to go with it, but I just want to explain that.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
No.
It is a four to one vote in favor. Mary Jill, is he out there?
I'm here. I'm here.
Was that a yes vote?
Yes, yes.
Okay, five to one vote in favor. Okay. Reports. Kyle.
Good evening, council and community. I hope you all got out and enjoyed that beautiful day out there today. And that can start off with, I talked with Cromer Creations this past week. The flower baskets are ordered, and they should be here in late May, hoping for, before Memorial Day. So keep your fingers crossed. If you want to do an honorarium or in memory, please contact the chamber, and that can be of any dollar value. On April 16th, that's a Saturday, we are having our Easter, Easter bunny hunt. Last year, we had moved it out to the fairgrounds so that we could have more space. And I've been asked to move it back to the city parking lot, where people think it should be downtown. And so I am asking permission from the council to have our children's Easter bunny hunt back downtown in the city parking lot. It is from 10:00 a.m. to noon. We probably set up about nine, and we're out of there by 12:30. And in 2019, we used the northeast quadrant of the parking lot, and that was the only place that we had to block off. But then the line went down along the winery, around their corner, and on their sidewalk. So we had a great group of people, great group of children that year. And so hopefully, we can get back to that volume. Then, just to announce, the Chamber golf tournament and fundraiser is on Thursday, June 16th. That is at 12:30 p.m. with a shotgun start, and it is being held at Gopher Hills this year. And so we already have three teams signed up, and the registration forms haven't even been created. So watch for them the first week of April out on the Chamber website. Any questions? There you go.
Thanks, Kyle.
Do we have to do something about that parking lot?
I don't think so.
Does that require action, or?
No, we've let them just do it. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, committees. EDA. Matt, you want to take that?
Neil, you want to take that?
That was a lengthy meeting, I know that. I don't have, I don't have the agenda here.
I can help you out. Few of the things that we talked about, there was a loan payoff for a revolving loan fund of $30,000. We held a public hearing for the land sale on the Keller Bartman Project. That was approved. They talked about the soil vapor preconstruction proposal. They approved that. And then, of course, we had another proposal that fell through. The guy decided, I don't know if he had sticker shock from some of his buildings, but he backed out on us. And Carshinson Leasing did come and talk to the EDA. They want to purchase a couple of lots. They decided to move forward with that as just a letter of intent, so we can start working on it. And then the lot by, it would be Sweet Harvest, that's coming due as, remember, we, a couple, if you remember, year ago now, I think, it was a one-year deal, they had that lot locked up, and it's, it's coming due. And there's another interested buyer, so we'll be working on that. And then they approved a Discover Cannon Falls ad. Other business, they talked about the Feast Expo, and I think that's on Thursday, correct? So if you guys, there was, I think, Matt, you're involved in that, and Diane, and Laura, and I will be out there. And then just the next meeting on April 7th.
Okay, thank you. Public works. Derek?
I'm trying to remember everything. I know we talked about the VFD that we passed today. There was another request for sewer credit.
What was the third thing?
Oh, yeah, we talked about new lights, replacing some lights at city parking lot. We're still working on that. I think that was it.
Okay. Park board, Matt?
Park board, we had what was in the consent agenda tonight, hiring our 2022 pool manager, Maddy Sebenoller. So congratulations to her. And then talking about Archie Swenson, the backstop and fencing on Softball Field 1, which is the one closest to the dog park area. Taller fencing, better backstop, and in conjunction with the CFYA, Cannon Falls Youth Athletics, about replacing that fencing and redoing it. And then new signs for the parks. We're still continuing business, talking about that.
Very good. Finance, Bill?
We met last night. We had two items. One was on a housing subdivision that's, that's still being looked at, so no action was taken. The second was regarding Tillian Brewing Company. For those who are familiar, on the west side, there's a piece of land that the city owns, but they want to put tables and chairs out there in the summer. They did that last year. And, and so in a future meeting, we'll have the administrative permit come forward. And that was it.
Okay. Planning commission, Steve?
Planning commission met also last night, and I'm going to turn it over to Diane.
Our first item of business was a public hearing. It was a conditional use permit for PID 525300010 to add a truck terminal business. This is on the 11.21 acres on the east side of 63rd Avenue on the south side of town, directly adjacent to U.S. Highway 52. The Cannon Falls Planning Commission approved unanimously the application for the conditional use permit pending conformance with all engineering specifications, ordinance, ordinance number 375, and all county, state, and federal permits required to complete this application. The only difference was, we did make an agreement with Central Trucking to let them phase the impervious surface, surfacing of the, of the lot. The second item was a discussion on the concept, concept plan for wind chill subdivision that was also discussed in the finance committee. That one was tabled for further research. That was it.
Thanks.
Thank you. Library board. Is Nicole out there? No. Mary Jill?
Oh, I don't have anything for that. We met, but I don't remember. I frankly don't remember.
They didn't talk about that snow policy, did they? They did.
No.
She said no, and she said, yeah.
I'm confused.
I think, I don't remember what they said about it. Laura, you go ahead.
Yeah, they said that they were...
Yeah, they said that they were asked to, and I, I was remote, so I kept cutting in and out, so this is what I heard, that they were asked by the finance committee to not pay nonessential workers if they closed the library early.
Or closed for the day.
Yeah. And they said that they're going to keep their existing policy.
Well, and, and that's in line with what we do, or what the staff does in the city.
The rest of the city staff, yeah.
Well, if they keep their existing policy, if they're not complying with what the city does.
That's what they said.
We'll have to do some work on that one.
To be continued.
To be continued.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, let's go around the horn here. Dan, anything?
Yeah, just a couple things. Utility Department is tentatively scheduling hydrant flushing April 4 to start, so we'll post that online as we get closer to that date. I do have the results of the televising of Bluff Drive and Sandstone, so we'll start looking at that, see what that looks like. And we're just staying ahead of the storm sewers right now.
Trees are coming down on Highway 19.
Correct.
I heard about that today.
I bet you did.
Now, Bill?
Nothing additional, just supporting Dan and Neil and Diane and these other things they've talked about.
Very good. Diane? Jeff? Neil?
Just one thing. We had a grand opening or a open house or whatever today that we went to, Diane and I, to the Habitat of Humanity. We've got two new residents in town, and we welcome them to Cannon Falls. So they'll be closing on Thursday and moving in.
That's up on the north side there.
It's up on St. Clair.
St. Clair over here. That way out. Very good. Laura? Matt?
Nothing.
Bill?
Nothing.
Mary Jill?
No, nothing here.
Hey. Derek? Steve?
Just one thing, Dan, SPF 15 would be all right.
Just one meeting note, the only meeting between now and our next council meeting is Joint Powers Board on March 22, 6:30. That's the only meeting. Other than that, I have nothing else. If nothing else, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Go move.
Second.
Motion by Gesmi, second by Duncan. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed?